Yeah, I just have to wait for the, wait for the bell, exactly, Apple time. Hmm, gosh, so did the kids enjoy the one each day? You were?
So like we're about to do like the leave and stuff.
Oh, fine, yeah, so did you enjoy the time at the conference? Oh, that's great, that's good, yeah, that's what those are supposed to be about, right? You know, a little bit of, nothing wrong with a spiritual refresh, yeah.
It's like they can feel it's almost five thirty.
They can, exactly, probably following their, following their, yeah, following their phone time like me, so, and there we go.
Our clock is off.
It is, that clock is off, I've got five thirty, does anyone object? I've got five thirty, everyone good? Okay, fantastic, all right. Everyone's so attentive here, um, can everyone hear me okay? All right, perfect, thank you. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. And I'll pause to ask Superintendent Wimmer to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again to everyone who's joining us. We recognize the quorum of our board with six members present, and Board Member Kurt Rebholz is excused absent tonight, so we look forward to seeing him again at our next gathering. Next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda, which was posted in advance for your consideration. I would move to approve this agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad, motion and second to approve this agenda, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. We have a number of recognition items tonight, we're gonna start with state recognition, Trail Sharks, mountain biking, and I believe Erin Felber? Erin Felber, our West Athletic Director, was behind the column there, now I see you, is gonna walk us through this item.
Hello, thank you so much for having us tonight to honor our wonderful student athletes. I'm gonna first introduce our head coach, Sean Ryan, from the Trail Sharks to come on up with his athletes.
Thanks Erin, and thank you for this opportunity to recognize our West Bend student athletes. For those of you who don't know, the Trail Sharks Mountain Bike Team is an interscholastic mountain bike team competing in the Wisconsin League Chapter of NICA, which is the National Interscholastic Cycling Association. Not to get too much into the weeds, but for, for new people that may need to know this, the Trail Sharks are made up of three scoring entities within our team. This is important to why these, these athletes are here. There's West Bend East, West Bend West, and the Washington County Composite, which is other middle school, high school, private schools in Washington County. Athletes score points by their finish placement in races for individual and team series scoring. These five athletes are here for both of those reasons, individual and team series state achievements. First we have Anya Lancer, who was our senior, placed second in the state individually in girls varsity. Aiden Schubert, who is our sophomore, placed third in the state individually in boys JV two lap. Along with Ayla Abraham, junior competing in girls varsity. Shaylan Jablonski, sophomore competing in girls JV two lap, and Christopher Tremaine, sophomore competing in boys JV two lap. All of their points totals helped to secure West Bend East's third-place Division Two team at the state, and that is out of fifty-nine total teams, so that's a pretty, pretty awesome achievement. Thank you.
I will call up our head coach, Scott Hammer, to talk about Ethan Hackman, come on up.
Come on over Ethan, I'd like to thank the board for taking this time to recognize Ethan for his outstanding sophomore cross-country career. At the awards banquet, I kinda made a comment that this was a memorable season for Ethan, not so much because he made it to state, but really it's kinda how he got there. Ethan logged well over three hundred miles over the summer, preparing for this year. First week of the season, during a routine practice over at the outdoor classroom, he took an awkward step, landed flat-footed, jarred his right leg up into his hip, into his lower back, and he was experiencing a lot of pain. So, we thought it would be prudent to shut him down for a week, that turned into two weeks, that turned into three, to four. It wasn't until week nine of the season that we could actually get him out on a course running all out once again. So, that also happened to be the, the week before conference, so he had one race to get himself prepared for the championship season. Was not a hundred percent at conference, but he still managed a second-team all-conference finish, eleventh place overall. Brought a lot of confidence going into the sectional race, where at sectionals, top two teams of the twelve teams there qualify as a team. Top five individuals not associated with the team advanced to state. Well, the WIAA shuffled things up on us this year, so along with us in our sectionals were the number three, the number seven, the number ten, and the number nineteen ranked teams in the state. So, we had a kind of a meat grinder of a sectional, so there was no guarantees that he was able to advance. What Ethan did have on his, going for him, was that he was getting healthier every single day. And, he had the course knowledge and the experience of our sectional course, which was distance slinger. As most sectional races do, went out extremely aggressive. Ethan, knowing the course, knowing what to expect, showed a lot of patience. Halfway through the race, he was sitting in twenty-second place, still well outside the window he needed to be to qualify. That final five hundred meters, when you could actually see who's in front of him, where he was, you could still see the finish line, he put on one of the best moves I've seen him in all his career. He closed in on both seven runners that were twenty meters ahead of him in the final four hundred meters, finishing tenth place overall at sectionals, kind of claiming his ticket to that state meet with the fourth individual qualifying position, so fantastic effort getting there, fantastic way to overcome all the obstacles that he had to embrace this year. While at state, finished eighty-fifth overall, time of seventeen oh two, which was his best time of the year, twenty-eight seconds faster than his time there last year. So, great, great job this year, way to stay patient, stay the course, and meet those goals. Congratulations.
Thank you. And now, state recognition for East Cross Country, and Molly Hanks, our East Athletic Director, will introduce our, the, how many do we have? One, we have one individual, right, one?
Yeah, on the east side, I will bring up my head coach for the girls, Mr. Rob Sandworm, and our freshman qualifier, Chloe Miller.
Don't surprise me like that Chloe. Thank you for having us, and recognizing all these amazing athletes, both West Cross Country and amongst the Trail Sharks. Chloe would probably prefer that she not have to stand up here and have us talk about her. She does not love attention on herself, and usually more concerned about, about those around her than about herself. Chloe's a freshman, and a three-sport athlete. She played basketball and ran track at Badger, this is her first year of running cross-country. Chloe had a great season, she started her season off as our third runner, and after that, she was literally off to the races. Chloe led our team as our top runner five times and our second runner four times. She always ran smart races, usually controlling her first mile, then moving up and passing many girls during the second and mostly the third miles. At the North Shore Conference Meet, she placed eleventh overall, earning second-team all-conference. At the sectional meet, she crushed her personal record by almost a minute on a very tough slinger course. She fought very hard to pass eleven girls during the second and third mile, and placed ninth overall to earn her spot as the fourth individual runner to make it to the state meet. Chloe holds the West Bend East Girls, or she is the first East, East Girls freshman to have earned that dishonor. Chloe holds the West Bend East Girls freshman 5K record and is our sixth fastest runner overall. She's the fastest freshman we've ever coached, but more than that, she's kind, she's thoughtful, an excellent artist and student. We look forward to coaching her through track and cross-country during the coming years.
Well, thank you to everyone for coming for these, for these presentations, we certainly appreciate it, and, you know, as, as students, when you go to school, right, you learn about reading and writing and arithmetic and many other very, very important subjects, but some of the themes that I heard tonight are, you know, you're, when you achieve something like this, it's because of hard work and determination and teamwork, and those are skills also that will be very, very valuable for you in your entire life, so congratulations on those achievements, we're very, very proud of you. And, that being said, we are done with our recognitions, we're gonna have our, our two student representatives give, give a report, and then after that, we're gonna take a little pause because we know it's a school night. And it's a public meeting, so we always appreciate it when people stick around, but I invite you to stay perhaps, if you'd like, for our student representative reports, and then we'll take a little pause, if anyone wishes to, to make an exit and we'll keep on with our, with our business, so, fantastic. Let us move to our student representative reports, and I think we're going to invite forward first Noah Minty from, yes, please, come on forward, Noah.
All right, I'm Noah Minty, West Junior, here once again to talk about clubs and co-curriculars and what's going on in the school. I've got a lot for you this time, which is good. To start out, on November fifth and sixth, Skills USA Leadership and myself, I'm not on leadership, but I went anyways, went to the Fall Leadership Conference, and we did exceedingly well. All of us got statesman awards, which meant that we didn't get a lot of sleep at night and worked really hard, so we learned a lot of valuable skills that we're going to bring back to our own chapter and make it the best we can possibly be, especially before we host district competition pretty soon. Multicultural Club is hosting a rummage sale fundraiser on the tenth of December, they've already started putting around flyers and stuff and getting everybody ready for that, so hopefully more news about that to come. West Bend hosted a debate tournament on November fourth in Varsity Lincoln Douglas Debate, West Bend swept the podium with first, second, and third place, so was very proud to be second in that lineup. Moving forward, Student Council is planning the blood drive for December fourteenth, the theme this year is not all superheroes wear capes, some wear Band-Aids. The West Bend Wisconsin, Wisconsin Civics Games team, along with the League of Women Voters of Ozaki and Washington Counties, hosted the first annual West Bend Civics Invite on Saturday, November fourth. Teams from West Bend, Grafton, and Cedarburg competed, and the West Bend School Board President, Quiz, Cr- Quiz, my bad, Chris Zygar.
I'm terrible with names too Noah, you know that, so you are entitled, you're entitled.
Oh, so Mr. Zygar gave the keynote address on public service. West Bend is the twenty-twenty-three Wisconsin Civics Games state champions and hopes to repeat this year, or repeat that this year. Youth Impact Club has just trained eighteen students in QPR, which is Question, Persuade, and Refer, which is a lifesaving strategy to prevent suicide. They attended four sessions during Flexi and earned their certificate, and twenty more people are close to achieving this certificate. Lastly for you today, SEED, or Saving Earth Every Day, has been working on a ten-hole disc golf course near their outdoor classroom, so this is involved installing baskets and clearing a good amount of buckthorn, which is invasive. The club will also be hosting a presentation on sustainable cooking this Thursday. That's all I have for you guys for clubs and co-curriculars.
Thank you Noah, appreciate it.
Wonderful.
All right, we also invite forward Archie Hughes. There he is, good evening.
Hi, thank you for having me, I'm excited to be here for the first time, and I'm gonna talk to you about student life and academics and then athletics, and I got a lot to talk about, which is all good. So, first off, we had the annual, we have the annual West Bend Comes Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra Holiday Pops Concert, will be on Tuesday, December fifth, at seven thirty at the West Bend High School Silver Lining Arts Center, tickets are thirty dollars and will go on sale November ninth. We also had a lot of exceptional ACT scores this year, many juniors at East and West scored very well on the ACT when they took it in March twenty-twenty-three. With thirty-six being the highest possible score, there are ten students at East and West who scored thirty-three, thirty-four, or thirty-five. Now seniors, these ten work hard to prepare for the grueling test and deserve our many congratulations. These students include Owen Damcott, Edward Fryer, Megan Minz of West, and Kate Delcor, Lydia Gilleski, Chloe Marsh, Jacob Myrum, Joseph Pritzl, Danny Zalp, and Julia Zuculie of East. We also had a pep assembly last Friday, our WBSD Way team hosted a pep assembly on Friday, November tenth, to honor our veterans for Veterans Day, which was really awesome, and to celebrate our school-wide goals. It was exciting to see our school celebrate ninety-six percent of our students meeting our school-wide behavior expectations daily. Next up for athletics, we got a long list of stuff to talk about. First off, our cross-country team sent Ethan Hackman and Chloe Miller to the WIAA State Meet, where they did a fantastic job. The JV Girls Swim and Dive took second in conference. Maddie Rumel from East and Mallory Spath from West won first and second in conference individually for swim and dive, and then Mallory and Maddie also competed in the D1 State Meet last Saturday, Mallory took nineteenth and Maddie took fifth. Connor and Cole Marisolis signed their National Letter of Intent to compete in collegiate athletics at D1 Penn State for wrestling, and were this week's Fox Six High School Hotshots. Mia Buskey signed her National Letter of Intent to compete in collegiate athletics to D1 South Dakota State University for softball, and Ava Thalen signed her National Level of Intent, Letter of Intent to compete in collegiate athletics at D1 University at Buffalo for softball. Hope Shensuma signed her National Letter of Intent to compete in collegiate athletics to D2 Concordia St. Paul for soccer. West Boys Bowling won their first meet against Kewaskom six-three, and the East Boys Bowling Team beat Slinger. Girls Basketball, Gymnastics, and Bowling started on November sixth. The Boys Soccer Team had the best season in school history and lost to state runner-up in the sectionals. Boys Basketball, Wrestling, Swim and Dive started today, the skiing snowboarding team will begin practice as soon as we have snow. Both Ms. Hanks and Ms. Felber took some of our student athletes to the Sportsmanship, Sportsmanship Summit, which was held at the Chandelier Ballroom in Hartford, and our Trail Sharks Mountain biking team had a very successful season and was led by state qualifiers, Anya Lancer, Ayla Abraham, Aiden Schubert, Shaylan Jablonski, and Christopher Tremaine. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, thanks to our student representatives for keeping us connected with everything exciting going on, and it's just a small sampling of all the great things going on in the districts, so we really appreciate it, so, well, thank you for catching that. So, true to my word, we're gonna take a pause, if at any, if at this time you're thinking about leaving the meeting, we're not gonna be embarrassed, so we'll just take a pause and thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it very much. All right, we'll regather here in a minute. I think since our folks are exiting in such an orderly manner, we can maybe just proceed with a couple of items of business. So next on our agenda would be public participation. I don't have any public participation common cards, is there anyone who's filled out a public participation common card? All right, since I'm not seeing any, we'll move on to the next item, which is our consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we have a number of items, the minutes of the October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three regular board meeting and executive session, three contracts, one resignation, one retirement, and dispersments posted to November tenth, twenty-twenty-three. That is the list of what is on our consent agenda, so I would move to approve this consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Kelly, motion and second to approve the consent agenda, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Now we move to discussion items, and our first discussion item is Facility Study Preliminary Discussion, and also meeting the Findorf and EUA team, and Superintendent Wimmer, I think you're going to kick us off, correct?
Well, actually, Kit's gonna kick us off.
Fantastic.
Kit Daly is with EUA, and there's two teams, EUA and both Findorf, part of that includes comprehensive introduction, so Kit, I will have you take it away.
All right, well, it's great to be here tonight, again, I'm Kit Daly with Epstein Union Architects, we go by EUA, people mess up the name and they mess up the, the letters all the time, but EUA is, is our name and our logo. So we're thrilled to be back here in West Bend, we had the opportunity to work with West Bend Schools on the Badger Middle School Project a few years ago, so we're excited to be back in the district, we're here tonight to introduce our team, we're here to talk to you about the process that's underway, and we're here to make sure that you, as a board, understand what kind of information's gonna be coming to you in the next few months as we complete the first step in the long-range planning process, which is all about the facilities assessment. So we're gonna go ahead and get started, and we're gonna start with introductions. Again, I'm Kit Daly, so my team should pop up here. I am actually wearing two hats on this team, I'm serving as what we call the client executive, so as a principal in the firm, I'm excited to be working with you all the way through the, the planning process, as well as a contact to the district all the way through whatever work is actually implemented in the future. I also am a communications and engagement specialist, so my focus is really on helping our clients and their communities come together as they plan, and to make sure that we're getting as much stakeholder input in the process, to make sure that we have strong communications transparency with the community. So that's my kind of dual role, I'll let Jackie introduce herself.
Good evening, I'm Jackie Michaels from EUA, I'm a senior project manager with the firm, and I tag-team with Kit during this long-range planning process, she has more of the communication side, I have more of the technical architectural side, so I'm working through closely with the Findor, Findorf team to go through what are these buildings all about, what are we looking to do from more of that technical side, so I'm one of the other point of contacts.
And I'm Bob Morris, I'm a senior design architect with EUA, I've been with the firm for about sixteen years, and my emphasis is really on educational design and K-12 planning, so during this facilities assessment part, I'm looking at how your buildings meet your educational goals and what different changes or, or challenges you have regarding that. My partner in crime is not here tonight, Katie La Court, but I just wanna mention her, because we're kind of tag-teaming, working together as a team to analyze your facilities and hopefully to design any work that comes out of this process. Thank you.
All right, now we'll kick it off for the Findorf team, so I'm Kyle Last, project executive, and my role is really to make sure this team has the support that they need, and I'm also part of the leadership group for our Milwaukee office. We also don't have one person here as well, that's Jordan Landerman, and Jordan Landerman is a pre-construction manager, and he gets really involved, we get the information from, from EUA, he's the numbers guy, the spreadsheets guy, and he's, he's really deep into those details and estimates and helping put together those budgets, using a lot of the information that we have from a lot of similar projects that we've done in the, in the area.
Let's next hand it off to Ryan.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Ryan Treichel, I am the project manager here for Findorf, I'm gonna be serving as the main point of contact on behalf of Findorf, I'll be working closely with your team at West Bend, along with EUA's team, so.
Last but never least, I am Erica Freeman, I am a communications lead at Findorf, where I will work hand-in-hand with Kit and Nancy and Jen on communications and engagement, which we're gonna touch on at the end of the presentation. And just wanted to at least give some perspective on the experience that Findorf and EUA share together, it is very extensive, we have done a significant amount of facility assessments, which is exactly what West Bend is doing right now, together as teams, so there is no learning curve between the two of our teams, we work very well together, we consider themselves friends, we also have very similar philosophies with working with districts and continuing to be your advocate, so just wanna at least share that there is a, a deep experience between our, our two firms. And I'll kick it back to Kit.
All right. Okay, so we're excited to be here, we have been hard at work, Jackie will talk a little bit about the work we've been doing in the, in the, with our assessments in the buildings for the last several months already, but we're, we're here tonight to talk about the long-range planning process, and really, the, the goal here is just to continue the strong work that you as a district have done for many years. You have a great track record of certainly documenting your buildings, understanding what their needs are, Dave Ross was a great advocate for you, certainly, we've worked with him over the course of many years, and so our job with this facilities assessment right now, and wherever it takes you as a district, is to help you create really data-driven decisions, okay? And our goal is to make sure that they are grounded in, in the why, what are you trying to accomplish? So as we're, we always start this process with districts, we always ask those questions and try to help you articulate, you know, what is the why, why are you doing this work? And that's important because it's an important communications, it's a very important communications message, but it's also important for you to, to use that as a kind of guiding framework as you go down the line and you start looking at needs and trying to develop priorities and potentially solutions, you wanna know what are, what are we trying to stay within, what are our guidelines and our parameters? So, this was a, a facilities vision statement that was recently crafted primarily by Dr. Wimmer and, and her administrative team, but it's- But this is really helping set the, the stage and the foundation for what's going to come forward. What are we going to be using as our, as our benchmark for trying to accomplish something with a significant facilities assessment? So, just to be clear, you guys are really committed to facilities that are safe, secure, and accessible. Welcoming, well-maintained, and operationally efficient, and adaptable to meet evolving student needs. So, as we look at that and we talk about that, that's the lens that we're going to be really applying in the future as we work through planning. So, it's a guiding framework. We're excited to have that established. So, one of the things that a lot of our clients ask us to help them with is to help us, help understand long-range planning, right? Long-range planning can mean different things to different people, different industries, et cetera. What we've developed is, is kind of a visual to support this, is this graphic that you see in front of you. It's sort of a inverted pyramid, if you will, and it, it really walks you through each step of the long-range planning process. And we try to, to work through each step in tandem with community engagement, community involvement between every single step. Because as a firm and as a team, we really believe that's critical to success, to defining success for you. It's your community. It's ultimately however you want to tackle and address your facility needs. We want to make sure that we've had strong community engagement through that. So, we're right here at the top of this big kind of upside-down pyramid, looking at the facilities assessment. And that's what the team's going to be sharing with you tonight, so you know what to expect when we come back in December with the findings. We have not completed your study. We are still working on your study. We've been doing so since June, July, when we first got into the buildings. And it's important that we're taking the time to really document and do that due diligence. So, that work is happening now. Once we go through a facilities assessment, that leads us to the next step, which is about prioritization. And that's you defining what are the priorities for you as a school board? What are the priorities for you as a community as you start thinking about how to tackle some of the facility needs that have been identified throughout the district? Once you start to have those priorities, which also kind of guided by the vision that you just saw, we start to develop solutions. What are the ways we can address those needs and how do we begin to tackle that? Most districts, quite frankly, end up with some kind of long-range plan that is done in phases. And we can identify multiple needs and, and solutions, but we can't do them all at once. So, at the very bottom of this pyramid, you see this reference to the long-range plan, phase one. We have no idea what that might look like for you and West Bend right now as we sit here as a team. But our goal is to help you through the process so that you, you can define what that looks like and take it one step at a time. And between every single one of these steps, there's the opportunity for community engagement and dialogue and reflection, which should inform the next step of the process. And when we think about that for West Bend and we were talking about how are we measuring that? I think some of these questions alongside, along with the, the why statement, your vision statement, are really going to be guiding our work. So, first of all, how does this continuous improvement work that you're doing in the district? How does that align with and support your long-range facilities goals, right? We want to make sure they're aligning and connecting, and anything you're doing with facilities ultimately supports that continuous improvement strategic plan. Certainly identifying when and where and how do you address some of the more significant capital maintenance needs in the district? You have aging. You have some aging buildings. We need to talk about how do you tackle them? How do you make good decisions about investing in buildings that will have long-term use in the district, right? So, we're wanting to be really fiscally responsible about that and thinking carefully about making those wise decisions. And then, how do we maximize from an operational perspective the efficiency of your buildings? How do we make sure that we're taking advantage of some available space that might have, have come along the way as things have shifted? Programs have changed. Some students have declined in one area, but maybe increased in another. How do we, how do we adapt your schools to, to support that? So, those are some of the kind of guiding questions that we're using as we go through this process. Any questions on the process? Good? All right, we'll keep going. So, one of the things that's really important too about long-range planning that we've learned over the years is that, as I said before, most districts have to tackle addressing facility needs in steps and phases, okay? And phases and how you do that is often defined by timing. So, what are the most significant timing factors for you to be considering as you think about your long-range facilities plan? Is when would we be able to go to, to our community to find out what they would support in terms of potential referendum? And so, that is driven by the election cycle. And ultimately, that's something you completely control. Whether or not you go to voters or not is, is not predetermined. But what is important to know as you think about planning and sort of tackling the long-range plan is when you can go. And that has changed over the course of the last 10 or so years. You can't just go to election whenever you want anymore. You have to be on a regularly scheduled general election or a primary. And so, what we've found is that, that not everybody is aware of that. It's interesting because the fact of the matter is that the majority of school districts do need to go to their voters in some form or fashion to be in tackling those significant capital needs. These are needs that are beyond what you could do in an annual budget. So, whether or not you do so or not is not predetermined, as I said. But knowing when to be positioned to go to your community is important. So, a snapshot of that is just helping you understand that from a calendar perspective, which is what we're showing here, you have in even years, you have four opportunities to go to the voters. You can go in the spring or in the fall. Each of them have a primary election. But in the odd years, like we're in right now, you only have the spring opportunity. And so, sometimes districts, we find people are unaware of that. So, they start talking about going to referendum in the fall of a particular year when there is actually no election. So, we're just trying to kind of ground the work with when do you, you could potentially go to voters. You, again, have the, have the ability to choose that and make those decisions as you go through the process. But you still have to align with actual election cycles. So, based on that, when we got started with the district, we were selected and hired by the district in June, we started looking at the future calendar for elections and said, all right, when would be the, the next logical and practical opportunity that you as a district could go to voters if you chose to do so? And we felt pretty easily as a, as a group, pretty quickly, that this upcoming April election, which was April of '24, would be very quick, right? It's taking us months to do the assessment and to work through that. We would have really eliminated probably any opportunity for community engagement to really define what, what and if there should be an election at all. So, we're really charting for the first step in this process, looking at November's general election, the fall, next fall. Excuse me, November 5th, 2024 would be the, the opportunity, the first practical opportunity you could go to voters. And so, with that in mind, we are wanting to work you backwards. Because what that really means is when you go to the voters in the fall, so November means board action in August. August 27th is the, is the, is the timeframe that you'd have to make all the legal decisions and put all your ballot language together and, and take action on that. So, that's going to come up faster than you'd think. So, we're trying to work backwards from, we're mapping you backwards from being confident and comfortable that you have assessed your facilities, you've prioritized, you've developed solutions, and you've defined what could be the first step in a, in a long-range plan with community engagement all along the way by, by August of next year, if you're feeling comfortable. If, I will say, you are not feeling comfortable for any, for any reason along the way, which happens fairly regularly. I mean, this happens all the time. It's like anything else. You have to have a destination, but you have to be flexible. We have to adapt. We have to listen and respond to your community. You as a board have to be clear and, and hopefully in consensus as you go forward. If you aren't ready for the November election, the next opportunity would be April 1st of 2025, right? So, we're just shifting to the next spring. April means a board decision in January. So, it's just kind of giving you some benchmarks to be thinking about so that it feels like sometimes it takes, you have all the time in the world to make these decisions and work through this process. And the next thing you know, oh my goodness, it's, it's almost time to make these decisions. So, with that in mind, we wanted to share with you sort of the high-level and very preliminary project timeline that we have developed as a milestone schedule to kind of work us through, backwards through this process. Any questions on the election stuff before I move on? Pretty clear, straightforward? Okay. So, in front of you, you see this, this very high-level preliminary timeline, which I printed out because it's so much easier to read in paper, 11 by 17. So, hopefully that's helpful to you. I'm not going to go through it line by line, but we did want to talk to you about some of the significant components that are informing this schedule and explains why, again, we're using November of '24 as the, as the first potential benchmark. If you decide you're not ready to move forward, the, the schedule just slides to, to April and so forth. So, with that in mind, again, this is a high-level working timeline. We are tracking the, the process in colors on this map, very similar to the graphic that you saw before. Facilities assessment is in the dark orange. We're moving forward into looking at prioritization and solutions. That's green. Interfaceed in that is spots of gray that, and with little stars, that's where your engagement is direct in the process. So, you can see that you are informed and influencing the process all the way through. And then, the lighter kind of, lighter orangish color is really where community engagement opportunities exist. So, you can see, we're not waiting till the end. We're doing that consistently through every step of the process. So, you can walk through, you can see that there's, we're charting backwards. So, from November, you can see some timelines around making decisions in August, right? So, as we continue to work backwards, the most important thing we're doing right now is collecting the data on your assessments. And that's what Jackie and Bob are going to talk through in a few minutes, so you know what to expect when we come back to you in December. As we do that, every step of the way, there's the opportunity for you as a board to be informed, to ask questions, and to influence and drive what the next steps are. So, what do you feel are the priorities? How should we begin investigating potential solutions? Asking the right questions to your community is really going to be very important so that you have the information you need to make informed decisions. So, this walks you through that entire process. And I just want to make sure you're also seeing and hear, we're saying, you know, if, if by, by the end of the school year, let's say, June, July comes, if you are not feeling that you're comfortable or ready to move forward, that's when the referendum cycle here that's shown here, we just simply push, right? We would just take more time to explore. We do more work around prioritization and solution development, right? So, there's lots of latitude in this schedule. And I would also like to remind you, the schedules like this, these are, these are, need to be flexible, right? Because things change. Things come up in districts all the time. We need to be responsive to that and be as flexible as possible. But I kind of feel like it's like going on a long road trip. If you don't know where you're going, how do you know if you're ever going to get there, right? So, that's really what this, this timeline is designed to be. Are there any questions on that before we, we dig into the facility assessment side and what to expect and all of that? This is about process. This is about timing. This is really about that methodology.
Any questions this time? Go ahead, June.
All right. So, I do see the light orange indicates community involvement and communications. What channels would we be looking for, for that type of thing? And what would that look like?
Great question, and I think that's still evolving. We are working very closely together, Dr. Wimmer. Nancy's obviously a significant part of this, making sure that we're using all of the district communications channels that you have available to maximize that. So, we're working through that. The community engagement side of it, there's a couple of different layers to that that we're looking for. One of the first is that we're hoping to have in February, March, to have a series of community conversations where we can bring the community up to speed with the findings of the report, right? So, we're, we're doing this extensive analysis of your buildings and we want your community to understand that and start to talk to us about what are the priorities as we begin to tackle solutions. And so, looking for some strategy where we bring people in, in person is, is typically really effective when you have those conversations. As you kind of go through the stages, we are talking about the possibility, exploring a possibility of some kind of broader community-wide engagement as well. We're looking into what those options will be and some potential vendors potentially. But the idea is how do we get out to the outsider community, outside the parents, outside just your families, outside your staff? We need broad community feedback and engagement. And so, as we begin to communicate and we start to move down into what you might be proposing to the voters, then we actually, excuse me, develop a very comprehensive communications plan that actually looks sort of similar to this in its depth and its consistency. So, it becomes its own plan of all the different avenues, whether you're talking print, whether you're talking electronic, whether you're talking about social media. It's just how do people get information in West Bend? And we would need to develop and tailor a plan for that so that people know where to get the facts. Any other questions on the schedule?
So, just a general question about the schedule. And first of all, I appreciate you emphasizing and reemphasizing, as I'm about to as well, that the board has not decided anything regarding any referendum at this point. This is really hypothetical discussion, but like good project managers saying, well, if the board wants to approve, there are certain windows, right? And one of the windows being November of 2024. And you've done a nice plan here, I think. My question for you is, based on this November 2024 date, as you put the plan together, do you consider it to be rushed? Is it, wow, this is, this is going to be a real nail-biter? What I mean is, yes, we have to make decisions as to whether or not we need more time. But assuming a normal amount of time and in your experience, is this generally achievable?
Yeah, I think we all felt very comfortable that November of '24 was absolutely achievable. If you had, if you had said to us in April, when, or March, when we were first talking with you, we were committed to going April of 2024, I think we would have been concerned that you wouldn't have been able to work through the process as holistically as you need to, knowing that there are complexities in your district. So, I, we feel very confident in November, if you are ready and if all the stars are aligning and you feel confident that you've got a solution that you want to propose as the first step in a long-range plan. We have no idea what that is, so that, that certainly changes the timing, right? The other thing I'll say about November of '24 that's important to keep in mind is that's a presidential election. And why that's important is that that's when the majority of your voters, stake, in voters, stakeholders, those that can vote, will actually turn up and vote. There's a big drop-off between that and the, and the spring elections. And that's important because you, I think, in West Bend, you want to go to your community when the majority of people are actively, actively voting, right? So, they all have the opportunity to, to weigh in on the proposed plan, whatever that is at that time. So, it's really aligning you to when the most voters are going to be potentially at the table.
Right. No, that's an excellent point, and I think one that the board should keep in mind, and that is opportunities to really hear from as many of our community members as possible. So, thank you. Other questions? Meantime, all right.
Okay, then I'm going to toss it over to Jackie, who's going to talk to you about the assessment itself. And just as a precursor, we are not showing any of your own data. We are, this is, everything you're seeing are examples from other districts to help you be prepared for what we're going to present in December. We're still working through all that data with the team and we just don't want you to think, what am I looking at? You're not supposed to be looking at your own data. These are examples. Okay.
All right. So, let's dive into what this facility assessment process looks like. And to reference the inverted pyramid that Kit was showing, we're at that top orange, dark orange tier of that. So, I'm going to look at the schedule at a little closer detail to just share with you. You know, the district hired us in June. We immediately had a kickoff meeting and started our regular core team meetings. And we were able to get into the buildings in, towards the end of July and into August to do kind of the, the nuts and bolts building assessment. Ideally, we like to do that without kids in the school because we need to be able to open all the doors, see all the rooms, and not disrupt the educational process. On the flip side of that, Bob and Katie went, wanted to get in for the educational adequacy side once we had kids in seats. So, they started their effort in September and continued that through September. And now, we're starting to just compile and analyze that data. In fact, we're meeting this week for many, many hours on going through all of the scores, the background, to make sure that we're all understanding on the same page about what that data looks like. And ultimately, we're going to be reporting out to you in December. And so, a month from now or so, we're going to be reporting out those, those outcomes, and then we will start our next steps. So, there are three components to the facility assessment itself. There's the building and site conditions, the educational adequacy, and the building capacity and utilization. So, the building and site conditions, that is something that I think you've probably heard about often. Dave Ross has done a tremendous effort of tracking all of the conditions in your buildings with Cory and with Tim to kind of maintain what that maintenance schedule looks like. And so, we were able to kind of get behind the front door of that data and be able to start to look at that, bring in our outside third-party experience to kind of look at that and really start to assess what those buildings are looking at. The educational adequacy, West Bend hasn't looked at that at, at a great detail before. So, Bob and Katie have gone in and started to look at that. He's going to, Bob will share out exactly what that was, or what that's going to be about. But the building capacity and utilization, that is a process that I think you have done. And we are preparing an update on that because that is constantly evolving. How you're using your buildings from year to year, semester to semester changes. And so, it's good to do another snapshot in time and understand what that building capacity and utilization is, which means how are you using the buildings right now? which means how are you using the buildings right now? All right. So building and site conditions. This is the visual assessment, snapshot in time of what your buildings look like. So we were out there with cameras, floor plans, trying to open every door, look at your building systems, look at ceiling tiles, that type of thing, over the course of many weeks to really understand what your buildings were about. What you're going to see, again, as Kit said, this is not your building representation. But when we do share this in a month, you're going to start to see floor plans indicating how building traffic flow works. We're going to be indicating building envelope or how the exterior is looking. We might be using site plan graphics for that. And it's also important to understand the age of your building and how many additions there are on each of your buildings because the more additions there are and the older your buildings are, which we know some of them are quite aged, the more complex it is to kind of do that assessment because there's renovations upon renovations. And do we have all of the drawings to represent that? To really do that assessment, which Dave and the team did a tremendous job of compiling that. But that does complicate the assessment. This is the scoring system that we used for the building and site conditions. You're going to see something similar from Bob in a slightly different way. But basically, as a team, we determined that this is how we're going to score it. So it's a one through five. If something is five, it's pretty much brand new, looked brand new, or we have comprehensive data from the district to say, yes, I replaced this this summer. All the way down to critical, which is something where we feel it is very important that it needs to be addressed rather quickly, whether it's something to the effect of not being able to heat your building this winter or a life safety or major code violation. We want to bring that to light immediately. But that's, that's basically how, and then there's variations in there for the scoring in between. If there was something in the building or not in the building that we would typically score, we just put NA because we're not going to score something that's not there or give it a zero. So we will show you what those scores look like next month. So this, this is, are all of the, if I call them buckets, are the categories for which we did the assessment. Again, this is not your district. The colorization is not representative of what you, of what you will see, but not this precise data. You will have photos associated with the conditions as well. A picture is worth a thousand words. So being able to see and understand what, why we scored something a four or a one is going to be helpful for you to understand the context for these buildings. But all of the major buckets or categories that we have here are going to be applied for each of your buildings. And then lastly, in terms of building conditions, we're going to do some summary tables for you because ultimately, you're going to want to start comparing these buildings and see how the data sizes up to each other. So, you know, this is a district that had only four buildings. You're going to see something more like nine buildings. We actually compiled East and West High School together because the building systems are so integrated, there's no way to kind of pull that data apart. So we put them together as one. All right. Bob, kick it over to you.
So again, Bob Morris with HepsiNew, a planner, architect. The educational adequacy is really something that I actually get kind of passionate about because I think as a designer and as an educational designer specifically, what I care the most about is seeing that the physical space enables you to teach in a way that makes the most impact for the kids that you teach. So when we look at educational adequacy, that's really kind of what this is about. What Jackie's been talking about is the conditions of the building. Is the ceiling tile in good shape? Do your boilers need to be replaced, et cetera? What educational adequacy is about is, do you have the right kind of spaces to teach in the way that you want to teach in your district to make the most good for your students, really? So that's done. Katie and I meet with your principals and discuss your buildings with your principals. We interview staff and to understand what their needs are, what they're experiencing on a day-to-day basis. And then we do a walkthrough of the building to observe firsthand what we're seeing. There's also some metrics involved. We compare sizes of spaces with industry standards and kind of look throughout your spaces that way so that we can develop a comparative metric so you can kind of see where your buildings shape up against each other as we move through. We use a similar scoring system to the building conditions, but because we're talking about space instead of the actual conditions, the wording's a little different, but it's a similar scale. Five being excellent, one being very poor. As we go through your buildings, these are the categories we're actually looking at. And then the subcategories within each one of those. You don't need to read every single one of them, but generally, we're looking at site. We're looking at the core learning classrooms. We're looking at intervention and resource spaces, common areas, overall safety, the specialty learning areas, including art, music, STEM, some of those. We look at breakout collaboration areas, and then we look at office and administrative areas. And similar to the building conditions, that rolls up into a sort of matrix so you can kind of see how the buildings compare to each other across the board. Any questions on the educational adequacy assessment before we move on to capacity and utilization? All right. Let's go into capacity and utilization. So we use these two words separately, although they're related to each other. Utilization is how you are actually using the spaces in your building. So it's an analysis of how each space is used throughout the day. Your utilization rolls up into a capacity number, which is how many students fit in your building based on your current usage. So in order to help you understand and visualize building capacity, these are example plans from another district of how that kind of looks. We give a color-coded plan that illustrates which spaces contribute towards the overall building capacity and what some of the other spaces are in your building that don't contribute towards that capacity because understanding that difference helps to kind of tell the story of why your buildings are what they are. And then there are some detailed spreadsheets that generate the actual capacity numbers. As we look at capacity, we're looking at what the desired class size is, what the number of spaces that are available are, and then how those come together to generate the capacity. As in your own house at home, there is no such thing as an empty room because as soon as a room becomes empty, we find a use for it. Right? And your schools and every school does that as well. So part of the capacity and utilization analysis is really understanding what are the spaces that maybe aren't being used as a classroom right now but are readily available that could be converted back to a classroom if necessary. And then as we get into building utilization, we do these kind of graphics, especially at your high school level, to help you understand how spaces are used in your building too. The different colors, and again, this is not your building. This is from a different district, which shall remain unnamed. But the different colors represent how many periods per day each space is used. So part of understanding why your capacity number is what it is is understanding what are the average class sizes and how often throughout each day is each potential contributing space being used. So we've found these graphics are helpful to help you understand the story of what your capacity and utilization is. All right. Any questions on capacity, utilization, or educational adequacy before we move on?
Just a general question. I believe it's probably on utilization. How do you address spaces like a shop space? Which, you know what, we only have three periods of shop, but it's not like you can use shop for a math class. So how does that get accounted for in this process?
We do use sort of different standards to evaluate how much space you need for a shop class. So that plays into it. But also understanding, I think that's part of that entire story and why we use those graphics is actually so you can see where the areas are that might be quote unquote underutilized and whether there's potential there or not. And with every district, every space is not used 100% of the time. So for high schools, the industry average or target is usually 80% utilization of spaces. So understanding that some spaces are going to be different than others. There is sort of an industry average, so we recognize that there will be the differentiation. And then hopefully, those graphics that we're using help you to understand where the potential sore spots or opportunity spots might arise in that equation. So if you have a number of spaces, like shop spaces or whatever, that might only be used one or two periods of a day, that tells us there might be an opportunity for using some of those spaces more efficiently if the building design were to accommodate a different usage, for instance. Does that make sense?
It does. And also just to go on the record as saying, that was a hypothetical example. I'm sure we have more than three periods of shop. So, but more of those special purpose spaces that are hard to repurpose.
And athletics is another one that often falls into that category because as we're looking at spaces, we're looking mostly for how they accommodate your educational model. But you also have after-hours uses and athletic uses that might play into play for some of those spaces as well. So just looking at it from one lens might not always tell the entire story.
Other questions? Go ahead, John.
Just a quick note. Or, and you kind of touched on it a little bit on how, you know, what the utilization portion and how many students are in each thing, or each class. But how do you take into account for the declining enrollment factor? And, you know, moving forward down the road, five years, we're going to have, you know, maybe 15 to 20% less students in there and need way less space. I mean, are we going to, are we going to, are you guys going to come up with some way to kind of utilize those spaces in kind of a double way, you know, down the road? It can be switched over to something else for a different purpose?
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent question. And I think what you maybe just did there is jumped a few months down our process here. So what we're trying to do right now is to help you tell an accurate or give you an accurate picture of how your buildings are used. As you see declining enrollment or different things emerging, what that likely means is that you have more capacity than you have space. Right? And so our first job is to tell that story and help you understand clearly how much additional capacity do you actually have over enrollment? And that remains to be seen. Right? And then once we've sort of assessed that and understood where are those opportunity spaces, then we can start to get into those questions about what do you want to do about it. So I think going back to Kit's point, community engagement needs to come in there too in terms of prioritization with your district and where do you want to go with that information?
Yeah. I just, I just think in, you know, moving forward and when you start getting the public involved with this stuff, they're going to really be looking forward to, you know, if there was an agreement to, yes, let's take on referendum debt and move forward with this way down the road, obviously, then how are we going to make sure that our buildings stay, you know, functional and are not obsolete within a few years and have rooms that are just vacant?
Yeah. And as we get into that, ultimately, you're looking at sort of a comparison of your enrollment projections versus your capacity numbers and how do those sort of things align up as you project out into the future and you look long range? But absolutely, that's crucial. Okay. Any other questions before I kick it off to Erica? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So just more or less a reminder of what's in your schedule. So some of those upcoming dates, EUA will be back in December, as Jackie mentioned, to present the findings of their facility study. And then come January, our team will be back to present what those costs look like from a building condition standpoint. So they talked about a couple of different components. There will not be prices for potential solutions. It's really just developing those cost estimates when it comes to the building conditions themselves. But I really want to focus on that February and spring and late spring opportunities to, you know, June, your question was very insightful because we talk a lot about when we work with school districts, hearing from their stakeholder groups. West Bend is no different than districts across the state where about 70% of your community are non-parent, non-staff. So they don't have that direct tie to the district. And that's the really important stakeholder we want to make sure we're bringing in, not just sharing out information, but making sure that we're listening to their feedback. And so Dr. Wimmer and your administration have really expressed a lot, a strong desire, as you have a board, as you as a board have, that we engage your community. So we're really talking a lot and planning for that spring time and then taking us into summer to where we're having that two-way conversation with your community. So those are just some upcoming next steps and some key dates to look ahead to. There certainly will be more from this team that we'll be sharing out with you, whether it comes to the different avenues in which we're going to promote this, promote the community conversations. But lots more to come. And so I'll leave it at that and bring it to Q and A. I know you already asked a couple of questions, but if there is anything else for either EUA or Fendorf, we're happy to answer them at this time.
Great, thank you. Board members, any questions? Appreciate very much the walkthrough. I consider this really a walkthrough of process and not about conclusions yet, and I appreciate that very much. And I also appreciate the emphasis you've placed on community involvement. I think that's very, very important. So thank you. I certainly look forward to the next steps in the process. Other board members, any other questions, thoughts? Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight. All right. That was our first discussion item. Let's see, as I have my agenda here out of order, pardon me. Let me get that back in place here. All right. Next, we have two discussion items related to out-of-state travel. And the first one relates to debate. And, let's see, I've got my notes here.
Hi, I'm here with my cold curricular hat on now. This is John Knutzer. He is our head advisor of our combined East-West debate team. And so he obviously gave you some materials to look at prior to this, and he's going to give you kind of a recap.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, and thank you again for the opportunity to talk about our phenomenal debaters. You heard from Noah before, who is one of those great kids I get to spend time with. We've enjoyed some really great successes this year, which is always exciting, such that we really were here asking for your permission to attend a tournament in Minnesota. So we have a circuit in Wisconsin, and then there are circuits obviously in most other states, as well as kind of a wandering band of students who travel to various places all across the country every week. So this tournament is one of those opportunities. What makes it unique for us is that our season starts with a set of topics we debate in September and October. Another set that we're debating right now in November and December, and then January has its own topics. For us, that's our state tournament, as well as our two national qualifying tournaments. This tournament, however, in December jumps the gun and uses the January topics. So we get a great head start on a lot of, a lot of our Wisconsin colleagues and competition, and then again, a chance to test our metal against some of those really, really great debaters from other, other places in the country.
Excellent. So is this, is this a tournament that's been attended in the past? It sounds like, okay.
Yes, yes. It's a tournament that we have attended in the past. We did not last year in 2021. It was online, so we attended, but from the friendly confines of the East Library, where we just kind of spend our time. But we have, and this tournament has been in existence for a very long time. I started coaching 20 years ago in a different school, and we were going to that tournament already at that point. It's been a very longstanding one.
Great. Board members, any questions this time?
Five.
Very nice.
Along with all the couple of judges and chaperones and myself and...
Excellent. Great. So we will take action at a future meeting. So I think we are, we are set. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. We then move to out-of-state travel for German class. And I believe Mr. Ron Rieger is here. Hello. Good evening.
Dr. Trueblood had to leave ill today, so she would have done the intros of our German teacher. Her Rieger is here to walk you through. You've seen this item before as well. It's to take the German students on a trip to the Kristallkinder market. So I will let her Rieger.
Guten Abend. Ron Rieger, the German instructor here in the district, and want to continue the tradition of taking the children to the German Kristallkinder market. Unfortunately, the one in Milwaukee is no longer functioning. So that takes us to the city of Chicago. We are requesting the day of Friday, December 15th. Be a full-day trip, two hours down, two hours back. The destination is the Daily Plaza. That's a nice, safe place for the students to be in an area where there's no wanderings, where of course, the importance about security and safety of the children. So I'd like to accompany you with three adult chaperones as well. And then the academic value of the act... And then the academic value of the activity will include seeking out some of the German cultural items on display. So some of the things that we learn in class, and students find that item and then check off the list, so hopefully try some food and maybe even some dancing. So our second initial, brief but initial destination would be to the Navy Pier. That's an opportunity for the children to unwind a little bit, and again, a safe, secure environment where we know their whereabouts in a big city. So it's important to me, I'm sure, as well as to the board. Costs are estimated at fifteen dollars per student. Again, that can fluctuate depending on how many join us. It's a very popular item, it's one of the first things the children ask me, besides my background and what brought me to the district, so I'm happy to be here tonight to ask the board for their approval.
Great, so I've been, I've, first of all, this is a trip that we've done in the past, and it looks like it's a same-day leave in the morning, come back at night.
Correct, yeah.
Pretty straightforward. I have been to this, to the, to the Kristallkinder market.
Oh.
In this location, and it's a great experience. I do not speak any German whatsoever, but I can tell you there are people all around speaking it, and so hopefully they'll have a chance to test their skills a bit.
Correct, yes.
And, and also, the security and law enforcement presence in the Daily Center is very, very strong. So you mentioned from a security perspective.
Definitely.
I'd agree with that assessment. Other questions that we have for our board members? So we'll take action on this at the next meeting. We sure appreciate your presentation. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you kindly. Dankeschön.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wimmer.
All right, we move then to reports. Our first report is the annual employee engagement report, and Mr. Lenny Hansen, our director of HR, is here to walk us through that item. Good evening.
Good evening, board members. This report that we're going to go into today is something that we bring forward each year around this time. It's an opportunity for us to summarize a whole variety of data that would impact employee satisfaction and employee engagement. We'll talk a little bit about the difference between the two and how we're working to address both. What we know, and what all companies know across the country and the world, is that high levels of employee satisfaction and engagement yields better outcomes for our clients, which in this case are our students and families, and also yield a workforce that stays, which is one of the biggest goals that we have and key to achieving our mission. So I always start off this report just probably saying, stating the obvious to everybody, but employee engagement, why does it matter? And there's any number of statistics you can pull about how much engagement has been studied and the impact it makes, but these are some that definitely, you know, I think sing to people both in the public and private sector and see the, you know, demonstrate the value and importance of engagement for everyone. Ultimately, an engaged employer are those champions for your organization, those people who don't just come to work every day and do a great job, but they come to work every day, do a great job, and they're on the mountain tops screaming how great your organization is. And everything we can do to foster that type of culture is, you know, one of our primary objectives, because it will help us achieve our mission. So how do we look at engagement? How do we measure it? You know, it's important that, you know, there's some anecdotal evidence, but there's also great importance in having a lot of data that, that funnels into the conclusions that we draw about engagement and satisfaction. So we actually have several different data points that we use. We, for many years, have conducted an internal engagement survey, engagement satisfaction survey. We continue to get very good participation rate on that. A seventy-five percent participation rate is very high, makes the, the data extremely valid and reliable as we're trying to draw conclusions. We also work with, with an external survey, so that we get both the internal and external type of environment for employees to share their thoughts. The one that we have used for several years now is the WEDSR survey, which is administered by UWM. DPI funds this survey to be administered to school districts across the entire state of Wisconsin. And what's really great about that is that not only do we get data about our own staff, but it puts it in context and comparison with the state average, which is really helpful for us making, you know, some good conclusions about how we're stacking up as an employer alongside all of the other four hundred and twenty school districts in the state of Wisconsin. We also look at employee turnover, absenteeism, as well as, like I said, a lot of that anecdotal feedback, as well as feedback we get in other survey and interview-type environments. So let's jump into it. We get, like I said, a lot of data. I've tried to sum up our highlights for you in a relatively compact format, but certainly I could talk all night about this, but you've already gotten to hear a whole bunch about construction and that, so I will make sure that is condensed but effective communication for you today. So first, before I get into the exact date, I want to talk about a few trends. So first trend or thing to be aware of is on our internal survey, we did a lot of research and study and discussion as a cabinet team and working with individuals involved in data analytics for our district about this rating scale we use on most of our questions. It's historically been a five-point scale, kind of one being the lowest, five being the highest. And we've, more and more in recent years, talked a lot about that, that rating scale and that number three. What does that number three mean? And we've heard feedback from staff over the years that that middle, that middle piece sometimes is interpreted differently. Some people look at it as, well, I'm neutral, or it's not applicable to me, or it's I'm on the fence. It could be any of those three, right? And that makes that number three problematic for interpreting our data. We got some feedback from some external individuals, including the UWM crew that run that statewide survey, as well as some other feedback, and decided to move that from a five-point scale to a four-point scale, really where you kind of take out that middle ground. You're either on this, this side or this side, right? And we really hope that would give us some clarity, because one of the biggest things you look at when you're talking about engagement is, okay, how far are we from tipping people to this side versus going the other way, right? And those threes really allow, allow individuals to kind of sit on the fence. And we really wanted to see which way are people leaning on that fence, kind of positive, negative, in all of these different questions. So we went to that four-point scale and communicated that to the staff as we administered the survey. What we found is that almost everyone who was on the fence tilted positive for us. We saw significant statistical improvement in all areas measured on the survey, which told us we definitely have people leaning the right way, right? So in terms of just a, you know, whether they were falling on the one and two side of the range or the three and four, big tilt towards that three and four, which we think really clarified a lot of the data we've been collecting over the years. Our satisfaction levels reached a five-year high on the internal survey, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. And then we'll also talk about teacher resignation reasons. We brought this up last year for the first time in a, in a larger discussion, as there were some new trends taking place in the market, and those trends are continuing and important to discuss. Not going to read through all of the highlights as we go through here, but these are some of the highlights that came out of that survey. You know, the, the number one thing you're gonna, you're gonna see when you study engagement is that there's a lot of factors that play into engagement satisfaction, but number one overall is the relationship of the employee to their direct supervisor. So on both our survey as well as the UWM tool, you'll find a lot of questions that talk about that relationship with the direct supervisor. We pulled out a lot of positives that we saw about, that, that staff expressed to us. You know, that number one bullet point there, that eighty-seven percent of staff agree that their supervisor's statements are aligned with their actions, really speaks volumes, right? It speaks volumes about a whole range of things, including trust, respect, commitment to the organization. We saw a lot of data, as you see in some of these other areas here, that yielded positive responses around that relationship with the direct supervisor. And then ultimately, we look at the overall job satisfaction rating, which, which reached eighty percent, indicating they feel well-satisfied with their job in the West Bend School District. Some of the, so that's our internal survey. So then as we jump over and pull additional data from that statewide survey that's administered externally, and, and just like our internal one is totally anonymous for staff, this survey yielded, asked a lot of questions, over sixty different questions. And then UWM has psychos, psychometricians who synthesize that data down. Some of the biggest overall areas of strength that came out of that survey this year from staff, and this is teaching staff only that take this survey, but their beliefs about the leadership of our principals, their beliefs around the trust that teachers have with their principal, and their beliefs around the trust that teachers have between each other, all yielded really positive results that you can see there. And all of those results exceed the state average, which really shows us that not only is the data good, but the data is good in comparison to our neighbors. Other highlights that came out of that survey, I, I list here, a lot of them again focusing on that principal-teacher relationship, as it's so critical to success at the school and feeling a sense of belonging and wanting to remain at that school. And also that, you know, this last piece here, I think, really speaks volumes as well, that we're providing our teachers with an instructional leader that they can access. That, it was very clear from the survey that, and we were ahead of the state average in that measure as well, that staff feel they have access to that instructional leader. If they want to learn about something, if they want to see something modeled, and, or they want to have, you know, those professional discussions, they have a place to go for that. I could go on and on about all of these different points here. I think really the teacher-teacher trust is one of the pieces that I said we exceeded the state average, and certainly this ninety-four percent feeling supported by their peers professionally speaks to that, and that's been something we've had for, for many years, is that sense of teacher-teacher reliability and trust and desire that they want to learn from each other and grow together. We matched or outperformed the, the state average on the majority of areas assessed on that tool. So then we also look at staff retention, right? People, they vote with their feet. So how does our retention of staff compare both kind of in the region as well as the state at large? So we have three data points. We have our own retention rate. This is first going to look at teaching staff or certified staff. We have a comparable around kind of southeast Wisconsin that we look at, and we've historically brought that data here to the board to, to look at. And then the, the state has done a better job each year of collecting it from a statewide perspective. So I'm not going to ask you to interpret the chart, we've put it together in graphic format for you. So West Bend is the blue line, and this is our retention rate. That red line relates to that kind of southeast Wisconsin average. The scary yellow line is the statewide average in terms of teacher retention. You can see that's definitely not heading in a good direction. The positive news is here, for six consecutive years, we have exceeded not just the state, but also the southeast Wisconsin regional average in terms of certified staff retention. Still, there's always room for growth there, and we're going to continue to work to see how we can continue to have outstanding and even better retention moving forward. But as you see on the chart where we have the exact data, we had about six percent of the staff turnover and retained ninety-four percent of that certified staff. I do want to note that does exclude retirements. We don't hold retirements kind of against us in the data. I don't know that we can compete real well with the desire to, with the allure of retirement, but all other reasons are considered in that, in that data. So we also have a lot of other areas. We've been working to retain staff, paraprofessionals, which make up over two hundred individuals in our district, important group of, of staff members. We've been working multiple years in a row to improve our retention there. That is a part-time staff. So while our certified staff data speaks to our ability to retain on the full-time side, this is a data point that speaks at least in part to our ability to retain on the part-time side. We are seeing a steady, better trend, but we do want to see better, and we're going to continue with a number of steps to work towards that. Then you have our non-instructional support staff, all the people, a lot of times behind the scenes, who are keeping things moving in the right direction. So the, the yellow bar is our professional, technical, or clerical staff. We merge them together. So in general, positive numbers, but the trend does vary from year to year. And those are positions really that it's important to highlight because they often have private sector direct comparables, right? So this isn't just competing with that group, with individuals in public education, but really throughout into all of private industry. The blue line is our nutrition staff, and I have to give a enormous shout-out to our new director of school nutrition, Tom Dembski, who finished his first year this past summer. And you can see the, the work that his, how his work has translated into really some of the highest levels of, of retention in his department, which is great to see. And the facilities has been an area that we've really been focusing on. We saw, you know, really difficult retention there, and now we're starting to see now at least a two-year change in the trend with a much more positive upward trend here. Now, it should be noted that, as you are aware, we do have a lot of facilities staff members who are employees, but in the last year, we have added some contracted service, right? So that contracted service doesn't impact this data, but certainly that contracted service fills a void sometimes that, that we haven't been able to fill. So there is some impact on the data from there. Some general turnover trends beyond what the graphs can show you. In terms of looking at those teacher resignations, these are the similar data points that we pulled last year, just to kind of look at it year after year. You see that individuals in the teaching profession leaving the district tend to have fewer years of experience in our system, where the median years of service in the district for our teachers who resigned last year was between five and six years. So that's something that we watch in terms of how do we improve our ability to retain that group. On that paraprofessional side, where we've put a lot of energy, it's, it's similar data in terms of, we tend to lose people early on, but once we get them in and get them comfortable and they get past two years in the district, they really tend to stay. So our efforts will continue to be on everybody, but especially that onboarding and new, new orientation and welcome process and how we can keep those paraprofessionals engaged early on in their careers. Teacher voluntary resignation reasons last year. So highlighted last year, leaving the teaching profession was the number one reason, and that was the first time in our history that that had been the number one reason, and that was the reason for thirty-nine percent of those who left last year. Unfortunately, that reason continues to be the number one reason that individuals voluntarily left us last year, and it grew, where half of the teachers who resigned last year left the teaching profession altogether. This obviously speaks to a wider issue throughout the region, the state, the country, but it's our issue too. We can't just say this is a nationwide problem, who, you know, we can't do anything about it. There are things we can do about it. We need to be competitive in that realm, because as we can see, it's a growing threat to our workforce here and retaining our workforce. The other areas tended to be kind of in a similar order that they've been in before. We, each year, we set a goal around engagement for, for the district. Our goal is actually tended to be more on the satisfaction side. So I talked a little bit about what engagement really means earlier, and then you've got just satisfaction, that general sense of well-being in the workforce. We've, we focused a lot on satisfaction in the past. Our goal last year was to move from sixty-five percent to seventy percent satisfied, and we vastly exceeded that goal by hitting that eighty percent mark. That eighty percent mark was very consistent also. Our eighty percent, it's on our internal survey, but the UWM survey, which measures using the exact same question, a couple of months difference, was within a couple of percent of that as well. So we really found that our data was very reliable. This is really more of a satisfaction goal, though, in the way that question is framed. So when we look ahead to what we're, we're targeting for goals for the coming year, we want to maintain a satisfaction rate of at least eighty percent, but we really want to dig in more on those engagement metrics. And we get a lot of that from the teaching staff on that WEDSR survey administered by UWM, and we're going to look at how we can integrate some of those questions and more engagement-focused questions, those questions that ask you, are you a true champion of the organization? We want to get more of those in our internal survey, so we can flesh that out a little bit more. So that first goal is our, kind of our metric, you know, measurable goal, and the second goal is kind of our intangible, looking ahead to how do we further improve our process. There's a lot of great data here, but we have a lot of opportunities to continue to grow based on the data and, and other information that we have. We're going to continue to work on paraprofessional or aid mentorship and onboarding, as I talked earlier. We know that time and workload management, especially around the certified staff, is a important, very important and very impactful on student learning factors, so we want to continue to analyze that. Some steps have been taken the last couple of years, but we don't want to let up on our emphasis on ensuring our staff have the time to develop amazing lessons for our students. We're going to continue to develop pipeline opportunities, especially as we... We're going to continue to develop pipeline opportunities, especially as we look to compete with the private sector more and more, especially in targeted areas where finding applicants is most challenging. And there's a lot of work going on with that that you'll hear more about into the spring as we, as we develop those plans. Compensation models. We've had the certified staff compensation model for a few years now, and you continue to approve expansion of opportunities for our certified staff, which is great. You also know that this, during this past year, you've approved a support staff compensation model to give a similar level of opportunity to a support staff. Athletics, you approved a compensation model a year ago, and actually, we're going to talk about co-curriculars momentarily as well. So I think providing, you know, sound compensation models for all staff is going to be a beneficial opportunity for us. And then a lot of these ideas here are ones that have, that are really just continuing from discussion last year, and we're going to, we have different teams working to, on all of these different action steps. So how will you continue to hear about engagement? So you'll hear about it in a variety of ways. You have our fall and spring school reports. Engagement is a piece of every one of our school improvement plans from each school. So you hear about that from each school about where they are targeting their efforts. The data that we get is disaggregated by site. So each school building leadership team digs in on their site's data around engagement, just like they do on literacy and math data, to say, where are our opportunities, where are our strengths? So you'll learn about that in those school reports in the coming months, as well as as we continue to update around the district's overall work to continuously improve in the area of satisfaction and engagement. So that's a real quick around the world of WBSD employee engagement satisfaction and entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions? John?
On the exit surveys, when they're, when a teacher or somebody is leaving, do you ask follow-up questions, like, okay, so they're leaving teaching, but why are they leaving teaching? Like, is there follow-up questions for that?
Yep. We have a pretty extensive exit interview survey, so I'd ask quite a few questions about, if they're going to another district, what are the top factors that played a role? You know, what were the positive experiences that would have kept them at their site? What are experiences at their site that maybe, you know, weren't as impactful at keeping them? So I have quite a few questions about that.
Do you know offhand what the top reason for leaving teaching is?
So it's a real range. We have people that leave to stay home, okay? We have people where there are family-related issues. There are people that cite compensation-related issues. There's people who cite any number. I would say it's quite a diversity of reasons. I, of those who left teaching this year, off the top of my head, I want to say the majority are, at least for a short time, if not longer, not going to be working right now. And that, that can speak to, okay, well, you've got the cost of daycare and things like that. There can be any number of factors there can be that can play into that. But I would say it's a real plethora of reasons that play into that, which, again, speaks to our need to, you know, really get after a lot of elements. There's not kind of a silver bullet in terms of how to solve that issue. Certainly, there's benefits to working in the teaching realm around schedule and calendar, but there's also disadvantages around schedule and calendar, depending on age of your children and things like that. So there's a, there's a wide range.
Just maybe to follow up on that, so the statistic around 50% leaving teaching, how do you think that compares, if we know, to neighboring districts or region or nationally? I mean, do we have, do we have a comparison that we can make like that, or is that a tough comparison to make?
I don't have another data tool that I could definitively point to you and say, yes, this is, you know, this is where it is. That being said, DPI, when it does its turnover report, again, it's doing that based on active licenses, as well as people who return to teaching or who renewed their license the following year. So some of that is tricky to really determine reason. But if you read some of the DPI reports, which I think I may have even linked in the presentation, the actual data source for that, does get into other sources that they used, because DPI is number one problem, right? I mean, their job is to ensure a stable workforce in the education industry in our state, and it's not hitting the mark right now.
Thank you.
I'm pretty sure I linked that in the corner.
Questions, thoughts?
Down right here in this corner is, I have that, that link there.
Great.
Oh, and I should note, you might wonder where the other bullet point is. So their data lags a lot, so it's not ready to be reported at the statewide level, which is why there's an empty bullet point there.
Other questions or comments? We appreciate you giving us this, this update. Thank you for compiling all of this. It's very helpful. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, next is our superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer.
Well, the students certainly shared a lot that was going on at our schools, and I appreciate that. A couple upcoming events. We will have a national speaker at our high schools, thanks to contributions by Delta Defense, Horicon Bank, they actually sponsor for the much larger area. Chris Heron will be speaking to juniors and seniors, a former basketball player. Will talk about overcoming addiction and delivering a powerful substance abuse message to those older students. Parents and guardians sign off on permission to participate in that event. But there's also a community event on Wednesday, November 15th, where Mr. Heron will present for free at the Cedarburg Performing Arts Center at 6:30 PM. So anyone in any of the schools or districts where he's presenting is welcome to attend that. We've promoted that as well with our families. And just marking calendars for upcoming events, the Fall Play is a series of one-acts, is showing November 30th, 7:00 PM, and then into the weekend with shows. You can get tickets available on GoFan, see the newsletters, or the high school bookkeeping office. So looking forward to that. And I think it was Noah who foreshadowed that the West Bend Column sponsorship of the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra Holiday Pops Concert will be December 5th, 7:30 PM, at the Silver Lining Arts Center. It's one of their largest fundraisers to sponsor. They give nearly $1 million annually to our students in scholarships. So tickets are $30 each. They're available to buy throughout the community. You can also check our website, their website, and we can help get you connected with those sales. And I think one of the students also foreshadowed, thank you to Columns for sponsoring an entire community-wide experience for fourth and fifth graders. They brought the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra here, and that's an event that is extended to public-private parochial school students. Everyone comes together for that afternoon. So it was great and a great chance to see the new conductor. The symphony was space-inspired, so students recognize music from E.T., Star Wars, other, other things that they've probably seen. A couple of our students received academic honors. The Golf Coaches Association of Wisconsin announced that four girls from our co-op high school golf team were selected 2023 Academic All-State Honorees. They include Kaylee Bruder, Maddie Bell, Sidney Clemmons, Addison Landy. So congratulations to them. That was just a recent award. I'm sure the kids will pick that up as well. And a reminder that, I don't know how it's happened, but Thanksgiving is next week. So make sure you look at that calendar. Students will be off school Wednesday, November 22nd, all the way through Monday, November 27th, for an extended Thanksgiving holiday with families. Our school staff have the same days off, except they'll be returning on Monday for some professional development. So everyone, safe travels and enjoy that extended break. That's all I had for tonight.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Wimmer? We appreciate your report. Next, we have, and this is a long agenda item, I'm not sure who wrote up this title, but I will read it. Next is Clerk's Report to the Community Regarding Deadlines for Filing for Board Candidacy or Non-Candidacy for the Spring 2024 Election. And Melanie Aragot, our Board Clerk, will read that report. Melanie?
All right. So an election is to be held in the school district of West Bend on Tuesday, April 2nd of 2024. The following offices are to be elected to succeed the present incumbents listed. The Office of School Board for Kurt Rubholz and the Office of School Board for Chris Swigert. The term of office for school board members is three years, beginning on Monday, April 22nd, 2024. A description of the school district boundaries can be obtained from the school district office. The deadline for incumbents to file a notice of non-candidacy is December 22nd of 2023 by 5:00 PM. Campaign registration statement and a declaration of candidacy must be filed no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 2nd of 2024, in the office of the school district clerk at the Education Service Center, lodicated at 7:35 South Main Street, West Bend, Wisconsin, 53095. If a primary is necessary, the primary will be held on February 20th of 2024.
Right. Thank you very much. And Superintendent Wimmer, I know if anyone is interested at any time in running for school board, you've always served that they can
Please reach out.
Reach out, and you can guide them through the process and let them know
Absolutely. So I would echo that and say the same about any of our board members. You can find their information accessible on our website. I know any of them would speak to their experience and kind of what brought them to the board and that process. So I know that you're happy as well, but certainly, reach out. Happy to go through that with you, answer any questions that anyone might have.
Great. Thank you. Any questions otherwise for Melanie? Appreciate your report. Thank you. All right. Next, we have action items. And Superintendent Wimmer, the first three items, there's one related to out-of-state travel for high school choir, and then regarding pre-calculus, and one regarding the art department course updates. Are there any additional items of information? We had these as discussion items.
Correct.
So any change since last time that administration wants to discuss on those first three items?
No, there were no additional questions or items for revision on those three items.
Okay. So what I'll do then is we'll take these in turn, and of course, if anyone has questions, certainly, certainly pause. But otherwise, we won't ask individuals to come up to the podium at this time. But let's start with the first action item, which is out-of-state travel for high school choir. And I would move to approve the out-of-state travel for the high school choir as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Thank you, John, for, to approve the out-of-state travel for the high school choir as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the High School Honors Pre-Calculus to Advance Placement Pre-Calculus. And I would move to approve the re-titling of High School Honors Pre-Calculus to Advance Placement Pre-Calculus as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to approve the re-titling as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. And then finally, our next item is art department course updates and new course proposals. And I would move to approve the course updates and new course proposals for the art department as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kelly. Motion and second to approve the course updates and course proposals for the art department as presented. Final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. So we've gotten through three of the action items, but there is one more, co-curricular compensation model, and we'd like to invite Lenny Hansen back to the podium to walk us through this item.
So this is an item that was foreshadowed actually quite a while ago. A year ago, the board took action to create a athletic coaches' compensation model. That compensation model really standardized how we determined compensation for our athletic coaches, brought that, really a standardization that had been in the works and in need of for a long time. Really what that model based compensation on was around both the skill level required to coach in a particular area, as well as the length of season, the number of participants, as well as recognizing longevity of coaches and how long they had stayed within the district. That model allowed us to set starting pay for each of those athletic coach positions, as well as create a mechanism to provide annual pay raises to those coaches who return to us as well. Retaining coaches, as well as co-curricular advisors, is a growing challenge for school districts, and that brings us to today. So with that coach compensation model, we've really created something virtually identical in terms of framework for co-curriculars that we had foreshadowed when we brought forth the coach model, and then are right now bringing forth the first step in advancing that for co-curriculars. Basically, what, what the coach model did, which the co-curricular model proposed, would also do, is it takes each of the co-curricular areas, just like athletics, each sport was broken in different areas, puts them in a different category based on those same factors that I spoke about earlier. The number of participants, length of season, amount of time that they meet, certain specific skills or techniques that are required of the advisor that make the position, you know, more or less difficult to find qualified candidates. And then simply groups them based on those factors, and then a compensation amount is determined for each of those groups. And therefore, we're really much more consistent in how we compensate in all of those areas. So that's kind of a rough summary of how that coach model was designed. The co-curricular model, which covers fifth grade, or all co-curriculars, but our, most of our co-curriculars are fifth through 12th grade, operates in the same way. We consider the same factors and make compensation decisions based on the same criteria. The document that you have before you today is a framework. It doesn't include any dollar figures. It's really the framework document that, if approved, sets the stage for us to then bring forward that, we call it the category list, but basically the different groups and where each co-curricular is categorized alongside the compensation amount that would accompany it. So we have been working on this, as well as the categories, for quite some time, and really felt that we wanted to communicate that this is progressing to all of our co-curricular advisors who dedicate a lot of time and energy to this. We wanted to communicate that this is progressing, and also communicate to the board where this, where our status is. We're really on the cusp of bringing this to its final steps, and bringing this forward is kind of step one of two steps that will take place around that. So if approved tonight, we would foresee in the next couple of months, most likely, bringing forward that final step, which would be that category list for the board to take action upon at that point. So again, just a framework here. If you were to line this up next to the coach model document, extremely, extremely similar language that you would see.
All right. Any questions from the board? Like you said before, this isn't dollars, this is setting the framework.
Correct. So this document would remain in place, we foresee, for many, many years to come, whereas that category list with actual dollar figures probably, you know, evolves much more frequently based on inflation, competitiveness, and that sort of thing.
Sounds like a good step forward. With that, I would move to approve the co-curricular compensation model as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, June. We have a motion and a second to approve the co-curricular compensation model as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. We'll be eager to see the next, the next point of output from this as we go forward. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
All right. So that takes us through our action items. Next are our future agenda items and discussion of the board meeting calendar. So November's going to be a busy month. November 14th, 2023, we have our policy committee meeting at 4:00 PM at the Education Service Center, and then on the 21st, the curriculum committee meets at 4:30 PM at the Education Service Center. Then our next two regular board meetings are November 27 and December 5, both 5:30 PM, and both at the Education Service Center, although we encourage members of the public to check the official meeting notices in case any time or place may change, but that's our calendar at the present time. Any questions on the calendar? Hearing none, I would ask if there are any items for follow-up and communication at this time? I'm seeing none. So that being the case, we have reached the end of our planned agenda. I would move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll give that one to Melanie. Thanks, Chad. All right. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries, and we stand adjourned. Have a good evening and a safe Thanksgiving holiday.